Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everybody online and in the audience. Today is Monday, August 7th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. Any additions or changes? I know some of them, I guess they're still on with the city, even though Michelle's not gonna be here. So how we're gonna do that done?
I think, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, yeah, we'll do a few. I think the 9:15 is gonna stay on the 10:15. We're gonna reschedule that for the 21st. And then the 1 o'clock public hearing, I think the Commissioners will probably at least open up the public hearing, but more than likely table that for the 21st. But I would like to get input from the Commissioners and the City of McCall, since that is a City of McCall-led public hearing. And then the 11:30, I don't know, that's also, I don't know if that is directly involving the City of McCall, but it is the McCall Impact Area.
Okay, so I think we'll just kinda limp along and see how it goes. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I would move that we approve the agenda for August 7th.
Second, who's second in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Get right on down into our agenda. These are all action items. The next one is the meeting minutes of July 31st. Everybody get a chance to look at those.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to approve. Make motion that we approve the means, July 31st.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next agenda item is the agreement with Pitt National Forest for the Lick Creek project modification. Jeff, I was trying to figure all this out. There's no money change, it's just what, more?
No, the only money that changes is $77,053. That'll be reimbursed from the rack to us when the job is done.
And this is for the gravel and Lick Creek?
Gravel and 4-inch rock.
And you're about done with it?
No, we haven't even started it. It'll be next year's project.
For, oh, next year's, okay, 24 project.
So what was the modification, Jeff? You're adding a section of road?
Okay, so that's a totally different one. Let's do one at a time here before you confuse me.
Me too.
I'm so confused.
It's Monday.
Go ahead.
So the four inch, 4-inch rock?
Are you gonna sign that?
I can. I was just looking at the Exhibit A under this, under this Lick Creek project, and we were doing some stuff in Idaho County. Is that a responsibility, I guess is the question.
On the Lick Creek one?
Yeah.
The one that's labeled Lick Creek, Jeff, says it's a modification, modify Schedule A by adding Yellow Pine Bar Road.
Um, that's the modification of grant. It's not a grant. That should've been, I'm not sure where that came from. So that's the very bottom one. Okay, so you guys are gonna sign the Lick Creek one?
Yep.
And I don't know why.
What is the change on Lick Creek one?
Lick Creek, we're adding a tenth of a mile of the Yellow Pine Bar Road, which will not be our responsibility. They will have to, oh, you're looking at Exhibit A, sorry.
Yep, and the first one is four miles in Idaho County.
That's, you guys have signed Schedule A. We are just adding the very bottom one, Yellow Pine Road. You need to look at road length, county jurisdiction. Nothing on that has changed, since you guys signed this in, uh, like last September, I think, November.
That's why I don't remember it.
So we're adding .10 on this Yellow Pine Bar?
Yeah, it's called Yellow Pine, yeah, Yellow Pine Bar. And that, and if you notice, that .1 is road length jurisdiction for service. They, half the stuff on here is their jurisdiction. But it has to be added to the Schedule A to make it legal.
Legal for who?
Everybody.
What are we, what are we accepting?
We're not doing anything. They just have to add it to the Schedule A.
So it's, so if I don't get that Yellow Pine Bar, and then one right below it says Yellow Pine Road, where is Yellow Pine Bar?
Yellow Pine Bar is the old East Fork Road. About a mile before you get to Yellow Pine, the old road used to follow the river.
Uh huh.
Kind of an old goat trail, and then it popped back up at the East Fork Bridge.
Yep.
That's the section.
So they're just adding this to our Schedule A, but we don't have to do anything to maintain it or anything?
No. But if you look on the Schedule A, under Forest Service jurisdiction, there's a lot of stuff on there that's not our jurisdiction, but it's on the Schedule A.
And what is Schedule A used for? I think we're all confused on this.
So Schedule A is pretty much every road in the Pitt National Forest that either gets maintenance by us or the Forest Service.
And that's where we get our gas tax from?
A lot of that is, if it's under the road length county jurisdiction, we get paid for all that. That's our $2,600 a mile or whatever it is.
Yep, that's the gas tax.
And I get that, but I don't understand why we have to show a Forest Service road on our schedule. Doesn't make sense. We have nothing to do with it.
Schedule A is the cooperative agreement.
So do we have any?
It's got all the roads on there that get maintained on a regular basis.
Oh, Valley County Pitt National Forest agreement number, blah, 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 okay. So Jeff, like in this stuff in Idaho County, does Idaho County come over and do any work on that side of the river? On our side of the river, so to speak?
Um, they take care of, from Warren to, I don't know, which section? They come up the French Creek, to Bergdorf, and then I think they go to Warren. And then from Warren to Sawmill Point, which is, that's Forest Service. Idaho County gave that back a few years back.
And what about down in the South Fork subdivision?
That's all us.
That's all us.
That's all ours. One of those switchbacks barely goes into Idaho County for about, maybe 100 feet.
Well, the reason I bring that up is 'cause now they're gonna drop the trash back there, and it's gonna be another issue for apparently us to handle. And no compensation, it's like, how far do we go with this? You know?
It sounds like we're not, we're not doing anything on the road, much.
Not through there, no.
No.
No, Valley County.
As long as there's no responsibility to the county, I mean, I don't really understand why we're adding something to Schedule that.
It's just, I mean, Schedule A is an agreement for all these roads.
So do we physically gonna be doing the work, though?
No.
So.
No, it says right there, .1, road length, Forest Service jurisdiction.
So Forest Service is the ones that are?
And then if you go to the next column over, road length county jurisdiction, there's nothing, it's empty.
So they'll contract with somebody?
Yes.
To do their own road?
Yes.
Okay.
But they have, I mean, there's tons of roads on here. You know, it equals up to probably 50 miles. It's on this, but we don't do nothing with it.
I don't know what we're agreeing to, but.
You have to sign it. I mean, they're, they're just wanting to, they just gotta get it added to the Schedule A.
So I need a motion then to approve this modification, is that correct?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the modification with the Forest Service for adding Yellow Pine Bar to Schedule A with no maintenance by Valley County.
Second, who's the second in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, bring it on up, Jeff.
Did you vote on the Lick Creek one?
Um, no.
Oh, shoot. That's the one I thought we were talking about.
That's the one we started on.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay, so let's go back and look at that. Bottom modification.
That was the one that I just.
Oh, Yellow Pine Bar is the one on the very bottom.
Yellow Pine Road. Yellow Pine Road is the one on the very bottom.
On our list, it's flip-flop, that's why you're.
Well, that's why I was like, oh, that's why I was like, that's why I told Sherry, I was like, that's on here, let's finish this one first, so.
This was the agreement. This was the agreement for the Pitt National Forest, for the Lick Creek project. It states on us, Yellow Pine Bar Road.
Oh.
No, Yellow Pine Bar is a separate modification. Lick Creek is a separate modification.
Lick Creek is the rack grant.
Right. So we need a motion to approve the agreement for the Lick Creek project as well. So moved.
Second.
They look similar in your, hand out on your computer, but they're a little different if you look at the road lengths.
Mm-hmm. One is Yellow Pine Bar Road, which is the Lick Creek project.
Worded wrong on there?
It's worded wrong then, so.
There's two separate ones, Yellow Pine Bar and Lick Creek Rack.
And still no money swaps hands.
Except the Lick Creek one, yeah.
No, it's $77,000.
We're gonna pay for the whole thing, but we'll get reimbursed for.
We get totally reimbursed for the whole thing.
Just for $80,000 of it.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the Lick Creek project modification. We just did that.
We just did that one.
No, we did the one on the bottom of our list, the Yellow Pine Bar Road.
Okay, let's start fresh. Okay. We are going to move to approve the Lick Creek project modification.
Second, who's the second in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We've already.
And then, the adding Yellow Pine Bar Road is a separate line item that says we're taking on .6 miles for some kind of a personal driveway.
No, Yellow Pine Bar is the one above it.
Okay, stop, stop. Yellow Pine Bar is Lick Creek. Well, that's what it says. That's what your documentation says, Jeff.
My documentation does not say that.
It does. On our stuff, it says.
It's on your stuff, not on my stuff.
I don't care, you're the one that gave it to us, so therefore.
See right here, Sherry. And Yellow Pine Bar Road. Yellow Pine Bar is right there. And we've already voted on this one. Oh, it is right below.
And that's what we're talking about now, is Yellow Pine Road.
That's not Lick Creek.
Yellow Pine Bar was referenced in the Lick Creek document that we received. So I don't know what the problem is, but.
Click on that front page and see.
Well, there's not a Lick Creek on here.
Project title, Lick Creek Route Improvements.
Modification of grant or agreement. And under the number nine, modify Schedule A by adding Yellow Pine Bar Road, number 51887. And that's your Schedule A. You have Yellow Pine Bar on there at .1, and that's, the Forest Service is taking care of that. And then there's a whole nother one, Yellow Pine Road, which is .6 acres to this lot 19. That's what you presented to us.
I don't know where that came from. I give everything to the clerk's office, I've.
This is what the clerk's office has, that they're getting.
I don't.
So they probably looked at Schedule and added Yellow Pine Road onto it, but that's already been on there for 15 years.
Yeah, it just not.
Yellow Pine Road's been on there for at least 10 years, not longer.
Yeah, I click on Lick Creek and it doesn't even come up as Lick Creek. Interesting. Says Yellow Pine Bar Road. Huh. Okay, that's weird.
That's all the Schedule A modification is adding Yellow Pine Bar Road, which is no maintenance to us.
So that's Schedule, so your yellow, your Schedule A does not have Lick Creek on it, is that correct?
It's called the McCall Stibnight Road on Schedule A. And it's been on there for, since 1996 or something like that.
Oh, Stibnight Road.
Decide drive to private land at Stibnight? So tell me again then, since our documents are not correct. So the Lick Creek project is just changing the grant from?
Nope, this is the agreement for the Lick Creek job right here. And it's a rack grant.
To let us start it, okay.
Yes. That's all that pertains to.
That's all that is.
2.1 mile leading the upper end of Lick Creek.
Perfect.
Oh, there's McCall Stibnight.
And then, the other modification of grant, 22RO USDA Forest Service, adding Yellow Pine Bar Road.
Yes.
At .10.
Period.
Okay.
I, I don't know, I didn't see your guys' what, what got sent.
Okay.
So your McCall's, your McCall Stibnight is like 60.3 miles?
That's from McCall to Stibnight.
That's that $77,000 that you're talking about? That will get reimbursed?
A part of that, yes.
Part of that.
Yes, 2.1 miles on top of Lick Creek Road is the rack grant. And that's the 22RO, 11041200.
It's actually called McCall Stibnight.
Yes.
So why do we, now that I'm looking at Schedule A, it's a good question. Why do we do .6 acres, or .6 miles, to access somebody's personal lot?
It's Forest Service road. And somebody took it over as a further road before I started.
We need to sit down and have a long conversation with the Forest Service on what we're maintaining, what we're not maintaining.
Yeah, that might be a good idea someday, is get us a map.
As needed.
Yeah.
But it's steep, it's 10 feet wide, it's, yeah. It'd be a good idea to sit down.
I don't think that we should ever be doing something to.
Okay, let's move on down our list here. We've got the Durham, I signed both of them, yeah. Durham Lane contract, Jeff, and my guess, my only question on that, O'Keefe and everyone signed off on it, but did we ever get the corners paved at the intersections?
They either did them Friday, or they're gonna get them this week.
So if we sign this and they're not done, we lose our authority over getting those done?
That's totally up to you, until you hear from me that, I have looked at the road and inspected the road, it's perfect.
Other than where they didn't pave the corners. I drove the road too.
They didn't pave radiuses on any of my roads, because they had to get pulled off to go back to Adams County for a week to finish a big job down there. And they did, they did let me know they were coming back, finish everything. End of last week, and they'll finish it this week. All the radiuses, all the driveways, paved driveways where they gotta tie in.
Jeff, I noticed that this is still the wrong document. Unfortunately, it's too late now to do anything about it, but.
What do you mean?
Well, he had signed the one that says 10% on the bonding. We were supposed to have redone this document before it got signed by the other gentleman, so. So I guess what I'm, what, in, in following up Bill's conversation, if we sign this, is the $43,000 bonding that we've requested. Do you have that bond in hand? And would that cover paving corners if they don't get done? If we had to pull the bond?
Easily.
But you don't have the bond, do you?
Do you have the bond in hand?
I'd have to check with Mickey and see if we got it or not.
So I would like to postpone this one and wait, and let's do this right.
Okay.
And make sure we're not putting ourselves in a corner here, something we gotta fix.
Once they're done with everything, the shouldering, radiuses, the driveways, I will go look at it, and then I'll put this back on the agenda.
Will you make sure also that we have all of the insurance policies in place and that bond?
We, we got everything. I don't know if we got the bond, but. Like I said, this thing started so late, they were basically done paving when we talked about it last week. So we, me and Sinda met with one of the other developers, and we pretty much said, "You will not put a shovel to the ground until this development agreement's done and signed."
Are you guys, on your agreements and your contracts, I know when I, I'm doing big projects, sometimes in my contract, they hold back 5% until my job's done. By state law, they can do that. You guys do that with your contracts?
You know what, now that you say that, it used to say that in there, and I don't know where we went from 110% to 10%. Something got, we used to, I went back to one we had five years ago, and it's had 110% on it.
It should be 110%.
And somewhere along the line, we lost a 1. And I'm pretty sure somewhere along the line, I'll have to look back, we used to say something about holding 5% of that.
That's just standard operating procedure.
Yeah.
I've always ran into.
That's a good point. I'll look on, look into that, too.
Yep. Hey, well, let's move on down our list. The next agenda item is an outlay report or request for reimbursement for Abstein Bridge. Jeff, or Mackenzie, is this the one for the economic development? Is this for the Economic Development Council one? Is that the one I'm looking at?
No, this is for Abstein Bridge.
I can't.
This is, this is the EVA grant.
Oh, where is it?
It's kind of a EVA, but.
Uh, EA?
It's Economic Development Association.
Okay, that's what I thought. Reimbursement bridge, but it says economic development. Mackenzie, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, this is for the reimbursement for engineering for the Abstein Bridge for $21,260.23.
And I don't see that $21,000 anywhere on mine.
So if you look on line U, Matt requested for reimbursement.
Mine says $42,774.98.
Hmm?
Want to come and see? $42,774, yeah.
Lots of expenditures to date.
That's for reimbursement.
Matt requests, I don't see that as in there.
Okay, so that one's probably correct, then.
You wanna take this one back and chew on a little more, we can do it later on today?
That says 0%, so that might be, oh, yeah, this is the new one, you're right. I printed off the wrong one. Yep, you're right.
So the value then, we can go ahead and approve this for the 42?
Yeah.
So our total reimbursement's gonna be $42,774.98?
Yeah, so that's a new one, because we just bumped it up to $200,000.
Okay, and then engineering, yep, here you go. Engineering fees are $200,000.
Yep, perfect.
Okay.
Cool.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the report and request for reimbursement on the Abstein Bridge for $42,774.98.
Second, moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Do we, we don't sign that one?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
Nope, you're, I'm.
We're good.
It's one of those Mondays, isn't it? You do sign this one, please. Then I'll print off the rights.
I'm assuming this is where I sign right there?
That one.
And today's date? Yeah, 8/7. Ding, ba-bum.
Sweet, thank you, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our next agenda item. This is also an action item. This is a discussion, decision on the resolution of the Valley County Board of Commissioners of the McCall Impact Area. Valley County State of Ohio designated certain properties as an area of critical concern. And I'm glad Brian's here. I guess my concern, 'cause we caught a little bit of heat from the land board when we did this last time. Is this gonna be considered a takings, if we do this?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think that's a question that deserves some, some research, and not just something that I would shoot from the hip on. So the, the previous issue, if you recall, was related to the other request to designate, and the county chose not to. Uh, it wasn't necessarily based on takings, it was just based on process and, and how that was, uh, was kinda presented to the board. This, um, the, the concern then is addressed with this one here, in the fact that we were not reacting to the sale of a property and the owners changing hands, but you'd be looking at the parcels without, without that development pressure or, or a pending sale coming, coming in front of you. So I think if you, if you want me to address the takings question, that's gonna require some time and some research, which I'm willing to do. Just not prepared to answer that question here, here today.
And I think the difference, too, they have not platted this one yet. I mean, this, this island is one parcel. There is a house on it that has a lease on it. But the past one, we felt like that was past it, because they had not, they had already put a plat upon it. And so it's a little bit different this time. We're just trying to get in front of anything that would be platted. And this one is the most sensitive, since it's in the middle of the lake.
So Brian, I see you're on, can you hear us?
I did, thank you, sure.
You have any comment on this concern?
Um, yeah, my only comment would be that this does not necessarily inhibit development. It just requires an extra layer of environmental assessment to be done.
It doesn't stop anything, it doesn't change them selling it. They, they could platter on top of it even. But it just gives notice that, hey, if you buy this island, there's gonna be some, uh, a little bit more environmental impact studies that are, will be required to develop it. So it doesn't change anything in their ability to develop it.
I understand that part of it, but what I'm concerned about is that if we require the state, or anyone, even a private citizen, that your, your ranch or your farm is an area of critical concern, you cost more for development, you require more conditions of approval. And that, to me, is taking value. I don't know, that's what's wrestling in my head. I think if I was the state land board and someone did this to state land, I would be a little bit concerned. But I could be wrong, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think that, uh, you know, I think that's, I think why, I think that's why a little more in-depth analysis on the question of takings would be helpful for you to reconcile some of these issues in your head. The, um, a couple of things to point out. One is, we do not have the authority to regulate state endowment lands. So this, this designation would only apply to the, uh, transfer of Shellworth Island to a private individual, if in the future that ever occurs. Secondly, um, I, I, I think if you recall, the controversy related to the other situation, there was a, there was a proposed, uh, there was a proposed auction that was, that was, you know, imminent. And the concern from the Department of Lands was that was affecting people's willingness to, to bid on, on that particular property. So putting this in place now, long before there is a pending sale or, or an auction coming up, will put people on notice in advance. Uh, you, I think you have some, some concerns about what the future values are with additional, additional requirements. But as Brian Parker pointed out, this does not prevent somebody from developing a parcel where you have a designated area of critical concern. There's just some additional requirements that will be imposed upon that, which is within your power as the Board of County Commissioners, when you have sensitive areas, to require some additional studies, if that's what, that's what, uh, what you choose to do. And, and it would add additional cost to the development, of course, but you do have the authority to do that, so.
So if we did this today, while the state owns it, to me, that would be impacting. Is there any way that you could do this through ordinance or McCall City or ordinance that says, as soon as the ownership is converted from state, then the area of critical concern designation would go on?
Certainly put that in the resolution, and it was February, I believe, when, when the last draft was, was constructed on this. So it's, you know, I can't from, from memory remember if that was captured in the resolution itself, but that could certainly be put in there. I think, you know, frustratingly, uh, after Cougar Island, we did reach out to the Department of Lands, wanting to have a sit-down discussion with them about these very issues, and, and they've yet to respond to that invitation. So we don't necessarily have the benefit of having that meeting or having their input on what their concerns are, so we can only guess at what they are. And if, if it's, if it's, now, if they're, if it's not a high enough priority for them to, uh, to respond to a request to meet, then I guess, uh.
Maybe it's not an issue.
I don't know.
Brian, you got anything you wanna add? Brian, are you there?
Yeah, I have nothing else to add.
Nothing else, okay.
And I guess, I don't, I don't know if you, um, sure, let me make a comment really quick, though. I don't know how that changes it. So it's still, if we have an ordinance or, you know, a resolution that states upon transfer, you know. So, it's still, if we have an ordinance or, you know, a resolution that states upon transfer, you know, this is gonna be put in place, that's exactly what will happen even with the area of critical concern, doesn't do anything until that transfer happens because we don't control IDL ground.
Yeah, I, I'm more concerned about this being used on private land someday. Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that this actually limits what they, we can require in, in an environmental assessment. Because if you look at the last paragraph, it says, um, the preparation of environmental assessment limited to the following potential environmental impacts, so things can't be made up in the future to, to cause more costs. And it, there are just three things here. You know, it's letting private developers know that this is the sole source of drinking water for Payette, for a city of McCall. Concerned with erosion of banks and beaches, and then what are they going to do with their sewage septic or sewer? I mean, it's, it's pretty limiting.
And this is the one that I just sent you guys a few minutes ago, because Ryan and Cindy had expanded upon the original one to include this, so this is changed.
Oh, so the one I'm looking at in our package is not the one?
Correct.
Let me see where she's...
I, I just sent it to you.
Thank you, let me, give, give me a second to read that one.
And, and I would say that, uh, state endowment lands, we do not control, so our control would come into play if it was sold, because they can do those less-than-legal subdivisions.
While I understand your concerns for farms, I think that this is a site-specific request, this doesn't, you know, I mean, it doesn't go beyond this specific island, and so, anything that would come before a governing body in the future would have to also be site-specific, and the concerns associated with that specific site to raise that. If not, I would agree with you, it would be a takings, and there would be, uh, consideration have to be given for that. So, this is only because this island sits in the middle of the drinking water of Payette Lake and is a concern to the community.
And it limits it to that, it...
And it limits it.
It's limited to the drinking water and the sewer.
Excludes butterflies and things like that.
Correct.
I mean, we'd have to cross that bridge if they ever came to that spot, because it, it would be almost no go. Unless it's, come up some wonderful way to get rid of sewage.
Well, and they actually are now with the composting and the, what is the kind they burn, I can't remember the name of it, but...
I think they have said it.
I think thi- this helps me because this defines that this is just the Shellworth Island. I think before I felt like, man, they could designate my farm as a critical area, and, and then whoever develops is gonna get, I don't want that.
Hoping you would definitely have the ability to, you know, make that statement in front of a future board, they would have, these are all site-specific.
Critical concern.
It can't be just a blanket statement, you know, for Valley County or whatever, it's got, it has to identify what the specific concerns are for that site. And, and actually, in stating the sewer and the water, I think Central District Health will not allow septics within so many feet of a sewer line, and I, I think it's five-hundred feet, I can't remember, but, um, so that's probably gonna take care of the issue on a septic.
Do you know if there's gonna be any other properties up, up there besides Shellworth that we're looking at?
This is identified for this at this moment in time, because this is the highest concern with it being an island within...
None of this stuff north of Pilgrim Crowberry?
Nothing has been identified yet for that.
And Cougar Island?
Cougar Island's already been...
Only two islands out there.
Cougar Island's already been platted, and our legal counsel feels like we're behind that, that plat that's already on it. This one is not platted yet, that's what I'm trying to do, is get in front of a plat.
Well, they, I'm not even sure legally you can pull drinking water out of the lake anymore for residences.
You can't for residents.
So I'm thinking, so where would they get their water?
Okay, so I think we satisfied my concerns, I'm sure we will here, if it doesn't work out, so at this time, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we designate Shellworth Island as an area of critical concern as per Resolution twenty-three dash, Doug, what would it be? I want to have a resolution number.
One moment, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my apologies, uh... Three. Yeah, Resolution twenty-three dash XX.
Yeah, we've got to figure out...
Commissioners, the next resolution number would be twenty, twenty-three dash fifteen.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
So we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We have something to sign?
I will.
You print it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Doug, I did just send that one, the updated one, to you this morning, sorry about that.
Is the... Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Go-up one was the LA report request for reimbursement for Abstine Bridge.
Yeah, that was the one for forty-two thousand, seven, seventy-four, ninety...
Right, but was the line underneath that part of it?
No, the modify- modification of grant?
Yep.
That's for adding Yellow Pine Bar Road to the Schedule A list.
So all that was part of...
We have the Yellow Pine Bar Road.
That was part of the Yellow Pine Bar.
And then we have the Yellow Pine Road, two different modifications.
Right, right.
Okay, we got that one done. So let's move on down to our next agenda item, it's an action item, this is a discussion on the Idaho Department of Land's gun range, and I'm sure I think you're leading this one.
Well, that's me. So, since I've been a commissioner, we have had concerns growing over two gravel pits that are off Warren Wagon Road that are on IDL ground, they are leased, um, my understand, I just found out additional information last week, but, uh, Meckles have one of the gravel pits leased, and ITD has the other gravel pit leased, which I just found out about. So since, um, Ed is here to discuss this, but within the last two to three years, the use of that range has substantially increased, it's now creating a safety issue, a physical safety issue for the residents around the area, and so I have again reached out to Scott Corkle at IDL and said, Scott, what can we do about this? And it was determined that if we chose, we could place an ordinance specifically against this area for shooting, and IDL would not fight us on that, the, the board would be fine with us doing that. Since that time, however, I spoke with ITD on Friday, ITD is in agreement with us that this is a concern for this area, so they are actually putting up gates in signage stating no more shooting, and they will enforce it from their lease.
Excellent, good, good.
So, IDL now gets out of the picture on that specific pit. Now, I have not spoken with the Meckles since then to see if they will do the same thing.
Are they shooting from both pits? Shooting in both pits?
I'm glad Ed is here so that we can have that conversation, because I'm not exactly certain, which is, which is...
Come on up to the mic, we need you. I, I need you to come to the mic and state your name for the record, Ed, if you don't mind.
All right, thank you. And, and thank you for this opportunity, this has become a huge issue for our neighborhood, which, uh, I'm sorry, my name is Ed Elliott, I live in McCall, uh, I don't know if I should say this or not, but I don't want to be mistaken for a California coming in and telling people in McCall what to do. I, I'm a third-generation Idaho guy, I've lived in the same house about a mile and a half out on Warren Wagon Road for almost fifty years, and, you know, in the early years of living there, we'd hear occasional gunshots prior to hunting season, you know, no big deal, we expect that. The last five years have become really unbearable, I mean, the gunfire can start at, uh, seven o'clock in the morning, in fact, last year, on Thanksgiving Day, when you still had access to those gravel pits, the gunfire started at light and stayed, and continued until dark, and it's not people sighting in their rifles for deer hunting season, this is automatic weapons, it's, it sounds like maybe the war in Ukraine sometimes, I mean, just non-stop, and I've driven up there a couple of times reluctantly, and seen as many as a dozen cars there. One of the days that was most disturbing, I drove up there and there was only one car, it was out of state, and they were loading up firearms that they'd been using into the trunk of their car, and it looked like they could supply the Ukrainian army with these things, so it's become a de facto firing range, and it's, it's incredibly disturbing, I, I can't go out of our house without expecting to hear gunshots, and I don't think that's the image McCall wants, or Valley County wants, to be in a neighborhood and hear gunfire all day. I started talking to Scott Corkle, I believe it was two years ago, and he said that there was something that was kind of in process, uh, a couple of us put together petition at Scott's suggestion, and in one afternoon, I got over thirty signatures asking for something to be done about that firing range at the gravel pit, and, uh, I, I've got copies of that petition that we circulated, I've also got, uh, although I didn't bring the ones that had been signed, unfortunately, uh, I've got a, I've got a close friend who's an attorney, and we kind of talked about this, and he did a little research, and he thinks there is not only a state statute, but a city ordinance that would help us address that issue too. The city ordinance applies to gunfire within the city limits, and I did check with, uh, Meredith Todd at the city, and the gravel pits are definitely within the impact area. So that ordinance may apply as long as the city ordinances apply to the impact area, and the other one, there's a state statute, and, and maybe this doesn't help, but there's a state statute that's specifically about, uh, disturbing the peace, and it talks specifically about gunfire, and I, I, I can't emphasize enough how it's just incessant sometimes, I mean, literally every day we wake up to gunfire, go to bed with gunfire, and, and this is in a neighborhood, and looking at the map with Meredith at the city, there's at least one house and maybe more that are within three-hundred feet of that gravel pit. I don't know what more I can add, but it sounds like you're making real progress on this, actually.
Ed, can you tell me, so there's two pits, one to the north, one to the south, the one to the south is closest to the homes, is that the ITD pit, or is that the Meckel pit?
I, I don't, I wouldn't know which is which.
I need to research that.
Yeah.
Ed, do you happen to have the Idaho code?
I do.
Oh, great, I'd sure like to look at that, too, on the newses.
And, you know, this is the petition that we, a couple of years ago, that we had a bunch of people sign, and in an afternoon, I could get a lot more, that kind of gives you an overview of how we feel about what's going on there in our neighborhood, and then there's a copy of the, uh, state statute and the city ordinance.
Then I would like to read into the minutes a couple of letters that I received from others that are living in that area, and I do have some map showing the proximity to this. So Doug, I'll, I will print these for you. This is from the Lothrups, my wife and I have worked for years with United States Forest Service, love the area, and just think that as growth takes place, the responsible thing to do is to develop a plan that goes beyond letting everyone do what they want, wherever they want to do it. I applaud you, uh, Commissioners, for encouraging discussion on this issue and hopes to find a resolution, shooters, hikers, residents will all benefit if we can get a proper shooting venue designated. Thanks for taking on the challenging issue, and we look forward to res- resolution, and he did text me sounds from that, but also, this is the same couple, um, that have had bullets now going over their house, so it's like they're starting to ricochet, the other night, they were out on their porch, and they had bullets flying over the top of their house, and that's what brought it closer to my attention, it's not just about the sound, even though, um, I am gonna read you a letter from the Chases. This is Marjorie Chase. Let's see, uh, basically, they're stating they shared the letter to the Commissioners, please let us know or we can send a letter, I'm sure I can get other signatures, a petition is helpful, I've had a similar experience of close bullets, and have had the unfortunate experience of coming down the trail towards the quarry, only to find a target set up at the base where missing the target would have bullets headed my way. Another time, a good friend with PTSD and a traumatic brain injury from IED was over for dinner when semi-automatic fire was taking place, of course, this really upset him, he is not someone I've ever seen rattled, but it was disturbing and not something he expected in a quiet neighborhood, thank you for taking this on. And then they did send, again, a lot of documentation, this is from Mr. Lothrup, he'd like to introduce himself, they've lived within two-hundred-and-sixty yards of Warren Wagon Road. Name's Mark Lothrup. They've lived in Idaho for the past thirty-six years, through my professional career, I managed a number of outdoor programs for the Mountain Home Air Force Base, I was the base instructor for hunter safety education, putting three-hundred students through, and ran the base's shooting safety range for recreational shooting. Additionally, I headed up a program teaching youth shooting skills utilizing an NRA program, I have a sound understanding of firearm-related use, safety, and responsibility, their home is two-hundred-and-forty-four yards from that gravel quarry owned by the state of Idaho. For a number of years, the quarry was used to mine rock and gravel, though it seems to be only used a few times a month, more recently, the quarry has been used as a shooting range more frequently, and in particular, has been a daily occurrence in the past two to three years. This year, it has become so active that we feel threatened, in several cases, shooters will remain on-site for two to three hours with over multiple hundreds of rounds expended. Not only does the noise from that proximity impact us and our neighbors, but the safety factor has also become a major concern, there are multiple hiking, biking trails, and the residents of this area extensively use the woods and surrounding area for a variety of additional activities, including huckleberrying and mushroom picking, walking dogs, et cetera. It, it does go on with a little bit more, but that gives you his background and the fact that he understands shooting and what's happening. I can give you guys the actual proximity to the pits, uh, the lower pit, again, the closest home is two-hundred-and-thirty-seven yards away, and with that type of ammunition and guns that they're using, um, it is a concern.
Well, I, I, Green Gate right here, that Green Gate?
Green Gate, I think, is up just a little bit.
So then that would be the first one.
Green Gate is your first gravel pit.
I, 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 I can't emphasize enough, I, I, I'm not a gun guy, but the type of firearms that are being used up there, it's just unbelievable, I think, in fact, there have been times when there are machine guns being used up there, it's just, it's just unbelievable, and a couple of other things I might add, when I started talking to Scott, the first time I met him, and brought this topic up, he said, oh, I get phone calls constantly about this. And then when I got more involved and we had the petition signed, uh, I think people now aren't calling Scott, they're calling me, saying, what's going on with this, Ed, and so, uh, the calls to Scott may be reduced, but I'm certainly fielding a bunch of them, and I continue to tell people it looks like something's in process, because it's, uh, most of you probably know Debbie Faraday, and I'm not sure exactly how this got organized, but Debbie Faraday and a group of people went up there to clean up the gravel pits last year, and as I've mentioned, I think I've seen as many as a dozen cars up there at one time, and of course, it's just the nature of a gathering, lots of beer, gunfire, uh, safety's a real issue too, I mean, it just, it just is, with that type of armaments, I guess, gunfire and the beer, and it goes late into the night, and...
Yeah, Ed, um, and I'll make a comment, and don't, let me finish my first part of my comment.
Yeah.
You know, the type of guns, what they're shooting, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Whether it's automatic or whatever, shooting sports is big in Idaho, it always has been, um, what's happening is that residentials are growing, they're moving out.
Yeah.
And they're finding ground, and they're enclosing on some of these places where people would popularly go shoot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there comes a time when you have to say, okay... So yeah, there comes a time when you have to say, okay, this area isn't safe anymore to shoot at. And we just have to shut it off and find other places. It's like I'm a charter member in the Valley County Gun Club. We built a gun range out on Warm Lake Road. That's a safe, excellent place for people to go shoot, enjoy it. Gravel pits are kind of a convenient place that people have gone historically. And I agree with Sheri, now it's become a problem because residences have encroached on it. And like everything else, once residents start encroaching, something's got to be done to make it safe. And if they have to shut it off, they shut it off. And I'm glad IDL has taken the lead on this, at least shutting that one down. Meckels pit, I don't know about Meckels pit, I don't know where it's at. I don't know if that's the one that's issue also. That's only something we can ask about.
All of those affect us and without doubt, residential development is encroached on the gravel pits. But we've lived in the same house that's now sixty-five years old. That hasn't changed. And most of the houses along the lake there, my neighbors to the north and to the south have all complained heavily about this. And I said, I'm working on it and they understand that too. Where we live hasn't changed. You know, that, what's changed is just the number of people up there and the constant gunfire, it's just.
And that's what's happening up, more people are coming up and you see it. People coming up here, they like to go out and shoot and we get that. Finding a safe place for them to shoot. If Meckels pit isn't a safe place, somebody needs to talk to Meckels and say, hey, this is what we're having a problem with. And they would probably shut that pit down to shooting. And because there's a lot of other gravel pits, you know, further out.
Well, the Forest Service right now is developing a firing range. That is, if you ride across from Brundage, where you turn up Goose Lake Road, right across from that, there's a road that takes off. And the Forest Service is, in my understanding, is actively developing a shooting range over there. There's no housing around it, it's a mile and a half off the road. And so it's surrounded.
We used to shoot there all the time.
Yeah. And so they are working on actively doing that. And I commit to working with them to make sure that that happens. So we do have something on the north side of the valley. I think, you know, our, our hands are tied on a lot of this. There is state legislation that states, unless there is, if it becomes a physical safety issue, we're very restricted on what we can do with gun ranges. And we can ask our attorney about that. I've got the code up right now. So, but this is a scenario where it's a change of use in that gravel pit. So the gravel pits have not been mined for a little while. They were just notified by IDL that you have to take product out or your leases are not going to be extended come 2025. So now ITD is going to be taking some gravel out of their pit in order to make sure that it's an active pit. I'm sure the Meckels have gotten that same message. And my understanding is they're going to start utilizing the pit again. That might stop some of it. I just think people see empty pits that are not being utilized right now for gravel extraction, which is what they were originally intended for. So I think, you know, as we work through this, I think things are going to change. But my recommendation is, we get both of the leases to try and agree to stop this, to post it. And then if that doesn't happen, we come back with a resolution stating that this pit would be exempt. That's the only thing we can do. Again, it's site-specific and it has to be based upon physical health and safety of the residents around it.
Physical health and safety and as just disturbing the peace in a neighborhood. And the state statute really clearly talks about that. And yeah, I do want to emphasize, this is not a Second Amendment issue. It isn't. It's just the disruption to the neighborhood and is even more critical than the safety issue, really. I mean, I don't want anybody to get shot, but just the noise is just unbearable. And it's not an image, I think, that we want to have in McCall and Valley County of being in a neighborhood and being subjected to gunfire all day long.
I wonder if it would pay us as a commission to write a letter to Scott Corkle requesting that this be, at least be altered so that it is not an option to have a gun range. So that he would have something in his life that he could go to his bosses and say, look, it's been.
I tried that out. I've gone that route. They won't amend it. The AG's office refused to amend the leases to include that because it's something that happens then all over the state. They want it site-specific and they want the county to do it. So I've already gone that route with.
I want to try sending maybe one to Tony Meckel.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I would, at least we got to start somewhere.
Yeah, agreed.
Because you'd think, and I guess Brian might know better, I mean, if it's a gravel pit, why can't you put up signs that say, no shooting here?
Is the enforcement?
That's just a, it's not nobody's gravel pit, but the state's. You know, people want to go out and shoot out in the woods, that's fine. There's, they got statutes that says they can't. But at a gravel pit, I don't see why you couldn't put signs up that say, no shooting at this pit.
And ITD is willing to put up actual gates and lock the gates if it doesn't stop. So they're willing to have some kind of an enforcement mechanism. I'll have to talk to Meckels and see what we could do to help or what, you know, what they would need in order to make that.
So why don't you leave that option with you, if you want us to, you want to write a letter, all three of us sign it, send it to Meckels?
Perfect.
And we could see Scott on it?
Let me talk to Meckels so that they have the ability to respond. And then, you know, I'll start verbally and see where we go. ITD is actually locking their pit this week. So that should be a huge help just to start with. And Meckels are very, you know, easy people to work with, so I have no doubt that they'll work with us also. And then again, you know, I'll pledge to work with the Forest Service to try and figure out what that northern one is. But this one's not it. This is not a good site for this type of activity to occur.
Thank you so much. And Sheri, I owe you an apology or two. I've left a couple of messages on your phone at different times when it was just unbearable.
I understand.
Maybe I had one or two glasses of wine too much, but I called Sheri and said, come on, you gotta do something. Anyway, thank you.
And know that I have been working on it quietly in the background for quite some time.
I know you have and I really sincerely appreciate it.
Thanks, Ed, for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ed.
Okay, we're going to keep right on going. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is facts, findings of facts and conclusions of law for the decision for PUD 2204 and CUP 2204 started expansion. This should be in your packet. Brian, put these all together. And unless you have anything else you want to add, I think these are perfect.
I'll take a quick break.
You need a break?
Neil does.
Neil does.
Too much coffee.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes and then we'll.